All this meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, will you please take the roll call?
Yes. Basine?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Lawson?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
DeCalagero?
Here. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to Agenda Item 2.01, the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 25 to 26. Dr. Birdsong.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair DeCalagero, Ms. Thomas Vice Chair, members of the Board, staff, our community. This evening or this afternoon, I will be presenting to you my Fiscal Year 25-26 Operating Budget Proposal. Mrs. Faivey, our Chief Finance Officer, will start the presentation. I will fill in in the middle and then she will close it up. So, without further ado, Mrs. Faivey.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair DeCalagero, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the School Board, and Dr. Birdsong. We are pleased to present the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2026, which will begin on July 1st of 2025. While Dr. Birdsong and I will speak about our plans for next year, the work of developing the budget included Ms. Crystal Skinner and her staff. Do you understand?
Please.
I will say that the staff is brand-new, and we had a very positive experience this year with the development of this budget, and I attribute that to the leadership of Ms. Skinner and members of her team. So, again, I want to publicly acknowledge you for a job well-done.
I also like the positivity with the green wardrobes. We're being very hopeful.
And the budget was guided by the Strategic Plan and the School Board's goals. Topics for discussion, next slide, please.
Oh, you won't. Okay.
On this slide are our topics for discussion for tonight. Next.
Want me to keep going?
Yes, yes, yes. And, let's see. Sorry. Okay, here. Our budget process, it began in October of this year, and the steps that are shown on this slide going through January, actually, early February, are the steps that have already taken place. Next slide, please. Okay. So, the things that we have left to complete the process, of course, today, we're presenting the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 25-26. On March 5th, we will, the School Board will have a public hearing. On March 19th, that's the date that we're recommending the School Board approve its Fiscal Year 25-26 Proposed Operating Budget. April 1st is the statutory deadline for submission of the Schools, the School Board's Fiscal Year 26 Proposed Operating Budget to be, for it to be received by Norfolk City Council. And, so Norfolk City Council will appropriate funding in the city's budget, and then later in May, recommended that the School Board will address differences between its proposed operating budget and the Norfolk City Council's appropriation to Norfolk Public Schools. And the School Board is proposed to adopt their budget, your budget, in, by the end of May. On the next slide, this shows the breakdown of the operating budget that is being proposed. The total budget is 772 million, and it's broken down into four funds. The General Fund is 450 million. The School Nutrition Fund, 26.9 million. The Grants and Special Programs Fund, 42.8 million. And the Capital Improvement Proposed Budget is 253 million. The projected operating revenue for the budget is, the largest amount comes from the state, which is 263.3 million. The city's portion is 167.8 million. The federal government provides us 5.4 million. We're estimating fiscal '24 reversion funds of 10 million, and then there are some other local funds that make up about 3.7 million. The, this slide represents one of our major challenges in providing a budget for the Norfolk Public School Division, and, which is our declining enrollment, and this graph represents the decline that we've had over the past couple of decades. And with that, our Superintendent, Dr. Birdsong, will speak to you about her vision and specific recommendations embedded in the Fiscal Year 25-26 budget.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair DeCalagero, Vice Chair Ms. Thomas, members of the Board, staff, and community. Again, good afternoon. In a few moments, I will outline my proposed recommendations for the operating budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. For our newly-elected School Board members, this will likely be a new experience for you. While you may have participated in budget preparations for other organizations, I surmise you may not have dealt with a budget quite as large as this proposal, which stands at approximately 772.9 million dollars. It is indeed a mag, a budget of great magnitude. And yet, despite its breadth, this proposed operating budget, it's a lean one. While the COVID pandemic had a profoundly negative impact on public education, the remedial funding received from the federal government was quite substantial. School divisions across the nation primarily receive financial support from three rounds of elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding, referred to as ESER, as a part of the American Rescue Plan Act, referred to as ARPA. Altogether, Norfolk Public Schools received 176.6 million dollars over the last three years from these funding sources. Unfortunately, that funding has ended. Let me say that again, that funding has ended. As a result, and in addition to the anticipation of significantly less reversion funds, the FY25-26 Operating Budget Proposal had to be strategically shaped to be more fiscally constrained. Norfolk Public Schools will have 16.8 million dollars less to work with during the next fiscal year compared to our current fiscal year status. Consequently, this operating budget proposal may not appear to be as stimulating or exciting compared to my previous operating budget proposals, as recommended, recommendations do not involve the launch of brand-new costly programs, technology platforms, and large-scale infrastructure initiatives on the level that I've proposed to you in the past. However, the good news is that this operating budget proposal is an extremely disciplined one, one that is designed to build upon the many programs and improvements this administration has put into place over the past several years. Please take a moment to again review this slide. These and other key investments have proven to be truly transformative. Indeed, our School Division, we are well-positioned to weather a lean budget, and most importantly, to serve our students superbly at the same time. While preparing a budget proposal presentation, I often look at the budget messages of other leaders for inspiration. President Barack Obama had this to say while delivering his final budget message. Yet, while it is important to take stock of our progress, this budget is not about looking back. Again, we're not about looking back at the road we have traveled. It is all about looking forward. Let's just say President Obama took the words right, right out of my mouth. This operating budget proposal is decisively forward-looking, developed upon the foundation of the School Division's Strategic Plan, the established goals of the School Board, and five key priorities. These priorities include employee compensation, employee recruitment and retention, rightsizing the School Division, safety, security, and building maintenance and repairs, and instructional resources for our students and schools. As a disclaimer, the manner in which the priorities are listed on this slide may seem to indicate a ranking. However, please note, that is not the case. These five priorities are all important in and of themselves. Norfolk Public School operates in a climate of intense challenges, a few of which are listed on this slide. However, Team MPS refuses to be intimidated, no matter what, right, Team? No matter what. This budget proposal is our battle plan for addressing such challenges. As I proceed to outline recommendations, you will see how my leadership team and I have strategically organized to overcome obstacles. I will move quickly through my recommendations out of the Board's respect, or out of respect for Board members' requests for a streamlined presentation. And for your reflection purposes, I have provided a supporting fact sheet so discussions can begin in a holistic framework, and that information is, was provided to you at the beginning of the meeting. In a study released in March 2024, the Annenberg Institute at Brown University estimated that there were 55,000 vacant full-time teaching positions within the United States. In the Commonwealth of Virginia, the estimated vacancy stood at 2,594. Norfolk Public Schools has made significant gains in addressing teacher vacancies. However, it is apparent that this is a lingering trend. Therefore, it is imperative that the School Division remains competitive in our salary structure. Please note that the salary recommendations I will outline in the ensuing slides take into account eligible part-time contracted staff as well. With competitiveness in mind, I'm recommending an increase of 4.5% for the starting pay of our teachers, which would be an increase from $57,500 provided during fiscal year '24-'25 to $60,088 during fiscal year '25-26. For current teachers, the recommendation is to also execute a salary increase of 4.5%, which includes a one-step increase on the teacher's salary scale, as well as a cost-of-living adjustment. And as a reminder to all of us who experienced years and years of salary compression, please be reminded that last school year, final salary adjustments were made to the compensation packages of eligible employees to eradicate this compression. And at this time, I'm happy to report that longtime employees who experience salary compression have now been made whole. And moving forward, we will work hard to ensure that this unfortunate situation does not occur again. In addition to ensure the integrity of the School Division's teacher salary scale, we recommend that teachers who have already reached the very top of the teacher's salary scale receive a one-time 2.2% bonus. This bonus will reward veteran teachers for remaining with the School Division, but at the same time, acknowledge that there's a top to every salary scale. Very few teachers will qualify for this bonus, as the vast majority of our teachers have between four and 10 years of teaching experience. The recommended salary increase for administrators, which includes school administrators and CAB administrators, will mirror how we plan to improve compensation for our teachers. The administration will accomplish this by providing a one-step salary increase on the administrator's salary scale and a cost-of-living adjustment, which, like teachers, will result in a 4.5% salary increase. As with teachers, those administrators who are at the top of their salary scale for fiscal year '25-26, they will also receive a one-time 2.2% bonus. For classified staff, I recommend increasing their starting pay from $15.05 per hour to $15.07 per hour. For current classified employees, I recommend providing a one-step salary increase, as well as a cost-of-living adjustment, to raise their salary by 4.5%. Unlike the other two categories of employees, teachers and administrators, a one-time 2.2% bonus is recommended for classified personnel who are also at the top of their scale. And I have more good news to share. There will be no increase in healthcare premiums for our staff, so let me repeat that. I propose that there be no increase in healthcare premiums for staff for fiscal year 2026. This means that current employees will enjoy the full extent of their salary increases. I am pleased that the administration has found a way to keep the cost of healthcare premiums down for our employees, especially during challenging economic times. And before I move on to address other priorities, it is important to note that employee compensation makes up 81.2% of the proposed operating budget. This means that with the remaining 18.8%, we must be extremely strategic and targeted in our priority allocations. This budget is built on that imperative. The details of the recommended recruitment bonuses are included on the accompanying fact sheet, again, that I handed out to you before the presentation. These stipends range in cost from $250 to $2,000, and were previously underwritten by ESER funding. They have proven to be effective, and therefore, I recommend that we continue to provide for them in the operating budget to support continued teacher recruitment efforts. And as you are aware, stipends not only expand the earning power for our teachers and other staff, they also help the School Division close operational gaps. Consequently, I am recommending that we maintain specific stipends previously underwritten by ESER, which now reside in the operating budget. Those stipends are allocated for PBIS support, wellness champions at each of our schools, and additional club sponsorships. We will also be continuing our use of stipends for grounds patrol for obvious security reasons, as well as for class coverage. This manpower is critical, it's absolutely critical, as we work to address the need for heightened school security and ensuring that our children receive high-quality instruction each and every day. And the projected cost of these strategies is approximately 2.8 million dollars. Veteran School Board members are aware that Lindenwood Elementary School's Ignite Program was designed as a pilot program. This operating budget proposal will fund year three of this pilot program. The funded strategies are included on this slide. Since the pilot's inception, teacher turnover has decreased, and Lindenwood Elementary School has reached full accreditation status for the first time, for the first time in 17 years, under the strong leadership of Principal Valencia Moore, and we certainly are still celebrating that accomplishment. And so, the administration has confidence that the third year will prove just as successful. If this level of success continues, we will evaluate the feasibility of expanding the pilot program to other schools in successive operating budget proposals. And, as we all know, teacher recruitment efforts are critical, they're critical to the School Division's success. This budget proposal recommends setting aside funds to advertise teaching positions locally and beyond. We also plan to continue supporting the Associate Teacher Program, which recruits college graduates who may not hold a teaching license but desire to have a teaching career within Norfolk Public Schools. Therefore, funding is included in this budget proposal for the requisite professional development to help these teachers to be successful in their classroom endeavors. I have also tasked our HR team to expand its teacher recruitment efforts, from attending and hosting more strategic recruitment fairs, to situationally including teachers, principals, and other building administrators to assist them with successfully promoting Norfolk Public Schools as a division of choice to prospective teacher candidates. Additionally, the administration plans to maintain our pool of tuition reimbursement funding as well. The total projected cost of these strategies is $504,000. Beyond the last decade, Norfolk Public Schools has experienced an average annual decline of about 300 students or so. Today, the School Division has the building capacity to serve nearly 35,200 students, but our enrollment stands at approximately 37, 27,000 students. So, we must, we must right-size the School Division to reflect that reality. Resulting benefits will include a more realistic allocation of staff, and significantly more funding to improve instructional programming, employee salaries and benefits, as well as facility improvements. And David Sturts, our Educational and Facilities Planning Consultant, is here with us today, and so you will be receiving more information about that in just a bit. As points of progress, this administration has closed four school buildings and returned them to the city for a projected annual savings of approximately $35,000 to $60,000 per site, and that's just for utility costs alone. These data points do not include personnel savings, which is significantly more. And of course, as you all are aware, there's so much more to be done in this area. So, as we move ahead, a long-range Educational and Facilities Planning Committee will be charged with developing an actionable citywide plan. This committee will meet throughout the end of this school year to review data and explore options for optimizing Norfolk Public Schools' portfolio of schools. Thereafter, the Board will, will receive recommendations for the beginning of a comprehensive school closure and consolidation effort. Communications and community engagement efforts in both the committee phase and recommendation phase will be substantial. Efforts will include community meetings, focus groups, direct mail, surveys, and print and electronic communications. We have set aside $130,000 to underwrite the fees associated with educational and facilities planning, as well as communications and community engagement efforts. I anticipate there will be considerable discussion, and maybe even consternation, amongst School Board members, our city colleagues, and community stakeholders regarding the timing of closures and consolidations. Some stakeholders may have the opinion that the School Division should close double-digit numbers of schools all at once. As the School Board is aware, closures and consolidations involve more than just shutting down buildings and moving children to new locations. Efforts to close multiple schools at once must take into account any needed physical changes to the receiving schools to accommodate student programs and spaces that meet the needs of all of our children. Additionally, physical improvements require adequate time, they require staff and funding. The administration, we're not aware of a magic number of schools that will be recommended for closure or consolidation within each phrase, phase. However, I am extremely confident that this administration and the School Board, working alongside our community stakeholders, we will, working in the spirit of teamwork and collaboration, we're going to get this job done, and in a manner that is thoughtful and strategic, and puts our students first. And as a disclaimer, as you're looking at the pictures on this slide, please know that they were just put on this slide for your, for visual purposes. This does not mean that we are closing these particular schools before I get 100 emails. So, this, this is just for your viewing purposes, and also to demonstrate that this is a division-wide effort. Over recent years, Norfolk Public Schools has made significant investments in expanding personnel and personnel and resources to support the safety and security of our students and staff. This budget builds upon that progress with the purchase of additional security cameras, vehicles to facilitate increased school coverage throughout the instructional day, and increased compensation for police security during athletic events to ensure regional competitiveness. Now, transitioning to the CIP, the FY25-26 Capital Improvement Plan is significant at $253 million. In addition to funds for the rebuild, the rebuilding of Maury High School, it includes school bus replacements, HVAC replacements, and the upgrading of restrooms, electrical systems, a replacement pool, and roof at Camp Young, and improvements to interior wall systems, just to name a few. So, Ms. Faivey, during her closure of this presentation, she will provide you more information about our CIP. Instructional resources for students in schools may be the last priority I address this afternoon. However, as I previously shared, this is no indicator of its ranking. Norfolk Public Schools must be strategic in linking resources to the needs of our students. In that vein, this proposed operating budget contains the funding necessary to employ an additional 33 English-as-a-second-language teachers to support our growing number of English learners. Our English learner-student population continues to significantly, significantly increase. And so, this year, we, well, starting in school year 2019-2020, we had 1,108 students, and that was about 3.7% of our total student population. And this year, that number again has significantly increased to 1,903 students, at 7.1% of our overall student population. So, we must be better equipped to move this vulnerable student population towards successful integration into our predominantly English-speaking academic environment. In addition to our commitment to meeting the instructional needs of our English learners, the School Division also strives to be in full compliance with the standards of quality as it relates to the teacher-student ratio for our English learners. Another vulnerable group of students whose needs must be addressed within this operating budget is our students with disabilities. In an effort to provide for the increased instructional needs of our students with disabilities, this budget proposal seeks to provide an additional 13 special education teachers to include nine inclusion teachers, two teachers for our post-graduates, one additional teacher for our students with visual impairments, and one additional teacher for our students with autism. The School Division has also seen an increase in the overall percentage of our students who are eligible for special education services, from 15% during school year 2024 to currently 17% this school year, at 4,607 students. And so, Ms. Tanner, if you can go way back?
Oh, way back.
Yeah, it's way back.
Is this where we are?
She's trying to rush me along. In other words, hurry up, hurry up. I'm almost done, just a couple more minutes.
Okay.
Another personnel addition I'm recommending within this operating budget proposal at the request of my high school principal. within this operating budget proposal at the request of my high school principals is increased staff support for daily school attendance. Student attendance continues to be a significant factor in high schools meeting the benchmarks established within the state's new accountability system. And even beyond that, we need to employ Herculean efforts to ensure our students are moving decisively towards on-time graduation. We really do. And so, therefore, I am requesting an additional five, an additional five attendance technicians so that each high school can have daily dedicated support, which they currently do not have. The additional reading specialist position to be assigned at Northside Middle School will move Norfolk Public Schools towards full compliance of the Governor's Virginia Literacy Act, which requires one full-time reading specialist at other, at every school. And at this time, we have a .5 position at Northside Middle School. And with the first year of implementation of Booker T. Washington High School's STEAM program, it has become evident that the school needs a teacher specialist whose primary instructional assignment will be to work alongside the school's administration and teachers to effectively implement instructional programming to ensure strategic alignment between STEAM competencies and daily classroom instruction, as well as other program components. This operating budget proposal also includes funding to support mentors for principals who are new to the principalship. This supporting strategy will provide new principals the guidance and mentorship that they need to be successful in a fast-paced, high-needs educational environment with guidance from effective retired principals who have been there and done that. Shoring up our leadership capacity will undoubtedly improve the instructional environment and the overall culture and climate of our schools. And as you may recall, extra funding allowed Norfolk Public Schools to implement robust tutoring programming supports. These instructional supports have proven invaluable as school staff have moved expeditiously toward addressing what has been referred to as learning loss. Yes, we're still talking about learning loss that occurred as a result of the pandemic. To maintain this effort, the operating budget proposal includes continued funding for tutoring supports. And finally, on this slide, maintaining funding for CARESOLIS and PANORAMA, which are provided as a resource and instructional tools to support the school division's social, emotional learning efforts, is recommended to better ensure that S E L supports are consistently deployed throughout our school division. Thank you, Ms. Tanner. All right. The school division's existing Equity and Excellence Learning Centers, affectionately known as E E L Cs, which include PB Young Elementary, J Cox Elementary, Ruffner School, and Booker T. Washington High, have gotten off to an impressive start. Veteran school board members may recall business meetings that took place this school year whereby parents, teachers, and students addressed the board to share what they perceive to be the benefits of our E E L Cs, ranging from additional before-and-after-school enrichment opportunities to additional resources to support for families in their education journeys to mental health supports for our families. So, I am recommending that this innovative program be extended or expanded to the Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella as the children and families of this school could certainly benefit from the offerings of our E E L Cs. The projected overall cost of $434,150 takes into account the $2,500 stipends for classroom teachers to assist with the extra planning efforts to execute this program within the school. The recommended funding will also help provide additional before-and-after-school enrichment programs, secure community partnerships, and purchases of supplies and resources that will be needed for various programs, events, and activities held at the school. And as you ponder the overall cost of operating our E E L Cs, which is equivalent to almost $1.1 million, please be reminded that the implementation of programming directly benefits our students, our families, and our community. My next recommendation does not fit neatly into one of the aforementioned priority areas. However, I assert that it will support all five priorities. Specifically, I am recommending that M P S set aside a pool of funding that will be used to employ specialized contracted legal services from outside firms when needed. For decades, M P S has been served by the Norfolk City Attorney's Office, and that service has proven to be invaluable. And we have two of our city attorneys sitting over here today, and I want to publicly acknowledge them for their daily work with Norfolk Public Schools. They have done an exceptional job, but they too need a break from time to time. So, however, the school division is just one of their clients, and they have to address a plethora of municipal needs. And as you are aware, education law has become increasingly intense and highly specialized. Throughout any given year, a school division must seek legal counsel on special education issues, labor contract and human resources law, property rights, freedom of information and First Amendment law, and various liability issues such as school bus accidents, which unfortunately occur. In previous years, and as recently as this year, I know the school board did have a discussion about hiring its own attorney. However, at this time, I am only, I'm only recommending that funding be set aside to support specialized contracted legal services when needed. And that, of course, will be under the advisement of our city attorney's office. Typically, I conclude my budget presentations with a pithy quote. This afternoon, I have chosen to end with this quote from Dr. Condoleezza Rice, a former United States Secretary of State and National Security Advisor. Dr. Rice asserted that "Education is transformational. It changes lives. That is why people work so hard to become educated and why education has always been the key to the American dream, the force that erases arbitrary divisions of race and class and culture and unlocks every person's God-given potential." All of us here this afternoon believe in the power of public education. This expenditure plan resonates with that belief. While lean, it has been strategically designed to fiscally provide for what is needed to secure the improvement. We seek for the precious 27,000 children whom we serve in our mission to provide equity and excellence for all, no matter what. So, I thank you for your kind attention this afternoon. I will now turn the podium back over to our Chief Finance Officer, Ms. Feivie, who will close out the presentation.
The remaining slides provide financial highlights. The proposed general fund budget is $450.2 million. Salaries and employee benefits comprise 81.2% of the operating budget with 18.8% of the budget covering all other costs. Next slide, please. Looking at the budget from a functional area, 71.1% of those costs are for instructional support, 12.1% are for operations and maintenance, 6% for attendance and health, and 10.8% for all other areas. The proposed budget is $16.7 million less than the fiscal year 2025 revised budget. The primary difference in the expected revenue is the estimated reduction in reversion and other one-time funds. Most of the reduction in expenditures is related to salaries and benefits as the fiscal year '26 budget preparation process included a right-sizing strategy involving the estimation of expenditures in light of the current hiring environment. And that's also illustrated on the, on the next slide where we show where we are expecting the reversion funds to end the audited fiscal year 2024 year with, with most, with most of those being in instruction and a large portion of those being in salaries and benefits. Again, that's related to the right sizing of the budget, not a reduction in positions. The, the slide being projected now, as Dr. Birdsong stated, a 4.5% increase in compensation is proposed for most employees. This slide shows examples of a classroom teacher and custodian, just, you know, for reference of what that increase will, will look like. As it shows, the starting teacher salary would increase to $60,088. And, and you can see, also see the middle part of that slide, the example of a custodian and, and what the increase would look like for a custodian and other classified employees at, in that range. The proposed budget also includes $253 million for capital improvement planning. And we, we show the revenue sources on, on this slide, and then on the next slide are the, the projects themselves. $231 million is proposed for the Maury High School rebuild, and the remainder of our deferred maintenance projects for the schools listed on the slide, as well as school bus replacements. And then, in addition to the proposed projects, we also wanted to show the, the active projects that we already have ongoing, and these will continue into the new budget year. And with the last slide, I'll recap the recommended next steps. March 19th, we're recommending the school board's approval of your fiscal year '26 budget. That is required to be presented to city council on or before April 1st. And in the month of May would be when we estimate that city council will appropriate our budget to us when they adopt their budget. And if there are any differences, the school board will address those differences and, and adopt the school board's budget. And that concludes my comments. Chair DeCaligero, sorry. Any, I will turn the podium back to you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Well, I was listening in on my way in. Thank you for a well-comprehensive budget to your team, Dr. Birdsong and your team. Excited to hear about the extension to Discovery, Camp Estella. I don't give my divisions mixed up, Camp Estella, Discovery, STEM. I'm excited about that. And also, I'm excited about the emphasis on custodians and their pay increase as well, support staff, and also hearing that the compression, did I hear it correct, that we have, it's been resolved.
Yes, last year was the, the last year of implementation for eligible staff.
I'm glad to hear that as well. So, I know I'm going to have more questions. As I said, I was listening on my way in, but what I see, I'd like, you know, but I know I have some more questions. I just wanted to say thank you for those.
Ms. Bessie?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. My, I more have a suggestion, given the number of agenda topics for this afternoon. If there is still a workshop planned for the business meeting, if we could come back and have an opportunity to, to share questions ahead of time and, and continue the budget discussion. I don't know if that sounds like something that we could agree to, given that we have a very large. 45 minutes, and I know our consultants are here. And so, that way, we could get some questions into Dr. Birdsong before the workshop.
Everybody in agreement?
I agree, yeah, we have a long agenda.
In addition, Chair DeCaligero, we are happy to host two-by-two meetings with school board members if they have questions and they want to come in and sit down with me and my budget team. We're more than happy to do that as well.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, moving on to agenda topic 3.01, Educational and Facilities Planning Update. Mr. Sturts?
Okay. Good evening. Thanks for having me, good to be here. Some familiar faces, and I get to meet some new ones. It's nice to meet you three this evening. Good to see y'all. Dr. Birdsong, Ms. DeCaligero. I got it, I was practicing, ma'am. Can I just call you Professor D?
Sure.
I get struts a lot, so I get that. So, my apologies, I'll work on it. Nice to meet you all. So, tonight, I'm going to go over our, I was asked to present a summary for, especially given the new board members tonight, sort of a wayfinding. How did we get where we are right now in portfolio planning? What do I mean when I say portfolio planning? As I said to the folks here, my mother was an English teacher, so define your terms. That's drilled in my head, among other things. So, we'll get to that. And then to discuss the committee formation, where we stand, where we see it going, and what the work ultimately leads to. So, I'm going to start, and Ms. Karen, do I have a clicker up here that I can use?
You do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Beautiful, can we?
We'll see you.
Do I have to do something?
Is it on?
It says it's on, I see green. It's a PDF, so it's not gonna.
PDF, so it's not gonna, yeah.
Oh, you know what?
It's mouse up there, too.
The mouse is also up there.
Roll, all right. Many paths, same summit. All right, what do I say in portfolio planning? We're talking about the number, sizes, configurations, and locations of your schools relative to your population. That's the whole game. And as Dr. Birdsong shared, the population has changed chronically, and we'll show that that has, that change has been in proportion to the change in the population overall. It is systemic in Norfolk, and it's, it's been happening for some time. It's going to continue. So, aligning the portfolio of schools to your population, not for arbitrary number balancing, but because the number of schools that you operate relative to your population determines how much you can invest per student. As that population decreases over time and your fixed assets stay the same, the amount that you proportionally can invest per student decreases over time in that same proportion as revenue comes with student. So, we're looking for that optimal balance between the portfolio of your schools and the population that you serve so that you can invest in your kids today, where they are today, as opposed to where the schools were created for what they were created for, a population when they were created years, decades ago. Okay, so I'm going to go over a little bit on our history, the enrollment and budget, and facility outcomes, the way we're thinking about that, some case studies that we, that we looked at as a part of this process, and I apologize for our three board members who have seen these before, and then get into our, our committee and next steps in our charge. So, with. So with, is there a way, can I enlarge this? I'm sorry to interrupt, but is there a way?
Go to the story that says 71% and hit the plus.
I'm just wondering if I can get rid of this thing, but.
On the side.
Is there a control?
That box up there.
All right, this'll work. All right, so in the time when we are looking at this in the spring of 23, at that time, looking 10 years in between 2010 and 2020, we actually saw an average city population decline of 480 per year and a population decline in the district at the time, 2010 to 2020, of over 500. So in proportion. That has leveled off a bit, as Dr. Birdsong showed of late, but still 300 students a year over the last 10 years is significant. And that is despite single family home permits and multifamily permits as shown. So that, that enrollment, that population decline is tied to your city decline. In many of my clients that I work with, the city population is stable to slightly increasing while the school population is declining because of choice, and choice alone driving the, driving that decline. Here, it is, it is chronic. It is systemic. It is not choice alone. It is systemic plus. We also looked at, so what are the conservative estimates of the fixed costs tied to the building, of the personnel tied to the building, the operations tied to the building as a planning number at the elementary, middle, and high? So we have some idea about what the reinvestment capabilities are when you look at surplusing buildings and consolidation. If you Google "school research on consolidation," you will find papers that say they don't save money. What you will actually find if you read those studies is it is possible to close schools and not save money if you don't actually reinvest in the kids. It's possible to do it wrong, is what they're showing. But it's also possible to do it well and to, and to pair your portfolio to your buildings and to your kids and reinvest in those children with the money that you can, efficiencies you can find. So we looked at that conservative, just under a million, 1.8 for middles, and 2.6, and this is at the time for highs, the average building specific operating and personnel costs. We then looked back and said, okay, what would a right-sized portfolio look like and how much surplus buildings would you be operating? Have you operating now? And what are the estimated costs based upon those models that you're carrying? What I did is I looked regionally at elementary, middle, and highs, high schools and said, if you took a school offline, would your student to capacity ratio be 85% less or more? My target was to make sure that every region didn't exceed 85% utilization, meaning you had a little room to grow. The goal is not to overpack schools at 100%. It's to be operationally efficient and allowing for grade level fluctuations over time because they happen, right? And flexibility. So it was if, if taking the school offline in a region meant that that region's utilization went to 90%, you didn't consolidate, right? It wouldn't make sense because you don't want to overload. So I did this estimate by region, by grade level, and determined that based upon your projections, at the time, the 2024 to 2031, the district was carrying between the elementaries and middles and, and the outer years highs, but you're not there yet, you're not there yet, just want to say that clear on high schools, 11 million a year in surplus operating costs from carrying that surplus that could potentially be reinvested, and greater than that, close to 16 and by 2030. That assumes zero consolidation. So part of the, you know, the, the design here is when we get to that right-sized portfolio, what does that look like? Here are my non-negotiables, and we get it, we work with the committee on, on how to apply this and how to add to it. Good condition schools, warm, safe, cool, dry, and educationally adequate. Right size to the population. So what is the, your newest elementary schools, for example, as I'm looking at it, if you just compare Calcott to Camp Allen, because they're right next to each other alphabetically, Camp Allen has 25% more square foot per student than does Calcott. They have only about, it only has about four classrooms more capacity, the new, your new school, but it has a lot more square foot per student because schools today are built for special education, for intervention and pullout, for adequate gym space, for the spill out space outside of classrooms, some of that, that flex space. It is, it assumes you have a nurse. It assumes you have counselors. It has more square feet per student because the schools are not just sit and get. It is holistic service to children. And so the newer schools are larger in that, in that sense, and they have more square foot per student. So defining what is the model for quality for our schools? Okay, so we've got good condition, the schools that meet the model of quality for total holistic education of our kids, approximate to our families. Where are our kids today? Where are the highest population of kids? Right? And we add to that with the committee. So this, this vision, what we're looking at, I want to be very clear, and I'll repeat this, that what we're looking at in a portfolio plan is an in-state vision for a rebuilt Norfolk public schools. Consolidation is a means to that, just as much as rebuilding is. Many of your schools need to be rebuilt, so we're going to look at those as well. So we looked, you have room to reinvest in your kids when you right-size this portfolio. We just need to do it well. That was phase one. Let's look at sort of the preliminary enrollment, budget, and opportunities. Phase two, wanted to look, as I said, at the time, and repeat, first of all, do no harm. We want to look at studies across the state of Virginia, across time, and look at if we're consolidating newer and fewer in rebuilding this district, newer and fewer, is there evidence that those larger enrollments are harming kids across the state when we look on over time? And we looked over 10 years of data. The answer is no. We did not find any evidence that larger enrollment schools and in the grade levels, elementary, middle, or high, had any evidence of causing harm. In fact, we saw evidence to the opposite in many cases, and I'm going to go over that. As a key part of our data, we looked at state mean-centered scores, which meant we looked year over year, what was the mean scores for SOL passage rate, which was our, our rudder that we used over 10 years of data, and how did each district, division scores vary from that mean, hence the state mean-centered scores year over year. From 2013 to 2022, obviously COVID year is not available. Here's the summary on some of the key findings. One, we found that the FCI, or the building condition of schools in Norfolk public, had approximately the same effect size on chronic absenteeism as socioeconomic status. Social economic status is not in your control. Building condition is more in your control. That's big. Secondly, that accreditation appears to be influenced by school size across the state. Generally speaking, by the, the schools with the enrollments, on the little bit of the larger side, had higher accreditation rates. See, under 500 accreditation rates of 88.7, 500 to 750, 92.5, over 750, 97. That's across the, across the state. Third, across the state, larger enrollments do not correlate with a decrease in SOL passage rates, and in many cases correlate with an increase in passage rates. The hypothesis that we have behind the findings, and it was a, it was a finding that we found from looking at 10 years of data, is that in many cases, you simply have more resources per capita in larger enrolled schools than in your very smallest schools. Key findings. One, statewide accreditation appears influenced by school size. No evidence that small enrollments increase the probability of being accredited. Two, looking at NPS data, the school condition correlates to, to outcomes. Portables do not. We did look at portables as well. We want to get rid of them because, for a variety of reasons, right? But that's not the, that's not the focus here. SES had the largest negative correlation to state mean-centered scores. Of course, that's not a, a new information for y'all, you would expect that. But the, the tying of FCI to chronic absenteeism having the same effect size as SES, that was surprising to me, and I've done this for a while. Building utilization by itself does not strongly correlate to straight state mean-centered scores. It's not, utilization is a proxy for the data that matters. What matters is can you invest in your kids to scale every day? Utilization is just a proxy to that. Additional findings. NPS has more grade configurations than any other Virginia division except Fairfax, and they're a tick larger than you all. The ratio of behavior incidents for NPS was close to the mean. One of the things we want to look at was, you know, is, is NPS an outlier? No, you're not. Chronic absenteeism, 51st percentile, right at the mean. SOL scores are in the bottom, 11 to 19% for reading, math, and science. There's, there's the target, right? More resources per kid. That is what's driving this. Red, you sometimes see is bad, and in this case, red is high, so red is good. So red is, red is hot. There you go, warm. What this looked at is 10 years' worth of data where we ranked every student subgroup by ethnicity as provided by the Virginia Department of Education across the entire state. Across the top there, these are organized by school size such that, and you cannot see this on the bar for some reason, but that, this little slice of data is schools under 150 enrollment, and then it goes 154, 50 to 199, then 200 to 249, so on and so forth. The numbers are the rank. So over a 10-year period, where did that, across the entire state, where did students in that subgroup have the highest passage rates in what enrolled schools? You can see as you go to the right, the numbers tend to get more red. Again, we wanted to make sure if we're really creating a division-wide plan for Norfolk about newer and fewer schools, would we do harm, probable harm, by having more the larger schools, which is, and we're not talking larger than you currently have, we're talking like Camp Allen for elementary schools, right? As your standard. And, and we just don't see that data. In fact, we see suggestions to the opposite. We looked directly in Norfolk, and of course, the smaller, the sample size, the more noise a dataset gets. So it's a little bit noisier here, but there's same basic trend line can be observed. And your very smallest enrollments, one thing to note, too, is that sometime, your very smallest enrollments are often specialized programs as well. And so things get a little apples to potatoes as you get some of our smaller, smaller schools. But the trend line still holds true. So recommendations from this preliminary study. One, get as many students as possible into FC, into facilities with low FCI's. Let's, let's address that. How are we going to do that? One, you need more money. First and foremost, you need more money. And for many of these schools, it's, yes, Rick's done, doing a lot of work on HVAC and roofs, air envelope interiors, a lot. Many of these schools, it's time for a refresh, it's time to rebuild, once you get to a certain point, which Mike's, HBA's recent study was, will show, highlight. So we need to increase capital funding, we need to decrease high FCI buildings, we need to do both. Determine enrollment size for each grade, grade level that affords the human and programmatic investments desired for all students. What is that model for elementary school and all the investments? What are the, what's the school design that fits that model? How, how many students do you need to afford to maintain all of the human investments? And then that's the model moving forward, right? And it's different options include in this, we also wanted to look at the configurations because you do operate a lot of configurations, and different options to consider are, do we make, do we move more to a traditional elementary, middle, and high, K5, 6, 8, 9, 12? Do we move aggressively towards a K8, 9, 12? Do we add, do we, do we keep a mix of that? What are the different options, benefits, and challenges? And that's what we're going to look at in these next phases. As a part of the study, after looking at the entire state, I'm on school size, we looked at configuration across different peer districts and outcomes. And the summary that I find, I can say in brief, middle schools are challenging. That's the, that's the Cliff Notes version of all of this. Middle schools are challenging. We looked at Baltimore City, Urban Ohio Districts, and the School District of Philadelphia. The reason for these is that these districts had, first of all, available data, serving urban centers, and that data was available over time. Baltimore, Baltimore is a very interesting study. Between 2000 and 2013, Baltimore consolidated schools while moving to a dominant K8, 9, 12 configuration. They did this, and it, it's, you can see this, I have a students per school from blue to red, so the school size is getting larger over time, okay? As their school, the numbers of schools are decreasing. You notice between 2003 and 2013, there was one state test, one test, the MSA that was used, and they switched to the park in 2015, the MCAT in 2019, and the numbers get messy after that because the tests change, right? But, but if I only show through 2013, people would ask, why did you just show 10-year-old data? So I'm showing the rest, but I want to focus on this. Between 2003 and 2013, the 60s, in 2003, 66% of their, of their schools were elementary schools, 17 were elementary middles, 17 were middles. When you get to 2013, 40% of their schools were elementary, 56 were elemidles, 4% were middles. They sunsetted middle schools over that period of time. And the top line difference from the mean on, this is a mean states, mean-centered score on the, on their MSA test, they got closer as time went on. From 12 points below, down to two, back up to four, and then you get to the outer years, and it gets really messy and noisy with the data, right? But they converted, they consolidated, they converted configuration, overall improvement in, during that period of time. Importantly, I looked at third, third grade, fifth grade, and eighth grade math and reading proficiency, looking at kids in the same grade level who were attending different configuration schools. So in third graders attending an elementary in blue versus elementary middle or a K8 in orange, slight improvement, slight overall better performance at the K8s in third grade reading, third grade math, fifth grade reading, and fifth grade math is really close. Fifth grade math is really, really close, but the reading and the others was higher. You look at the eighth graders in middle schools versus K8s, it's pretty noticeable in reading, math, less so, attendance, higher, and then you compare that to NPS average SOL passing rates in the same manner, and you see a similar trend line. Philadelphia, we looked at 2023 data and showed that the students who, by different grades, attending elementary K8s or middle schools, that students in middle school settings consistently underperform their peers in, in difference, in the other settings, in K8 in particular. Really interesting to me is if you look, I'm going to geek out for a minute, so apologize, but if you look at the growth rate, which is here, what I've highlighted in this, in this bar, you see that sixth graders in an elementary setting make giant growth, but their, their ending achievement is, is similar or below their peers in K8 settings, and the middle schools are even lower than that. There's a bump that I found in the data, trend in the data is that students who are at the very top of their elementary program, fifth graders in a K5, sixth graders in a K6, tend to do very, very well, being kings and queens of the hill. But the K8 settings, they tend to, they tend to start ahead and end at the same rate or ahead of their peers in the other settings, in, in this study in particular. Middle schools are challenging. Chronic absenteeism was higher as well. Urban Ohio districts, Akron, Cincinnati, Cleveland, Columbus, Dayton, and Toledo, again, same results. Students in middle school settings consistently underperform their peers in elementary and K8 settings while having and K-8 settings while having significantly more disciplined days per student. It's worth noting, you know, they're small, these elementary schools and middle schools in many cases are small. Dayton and Toledo had 712s, we're not talking about that here. But we looked at ranking, performance, discipline, teacher evaluations, chronic absenteeism, and closing of gaps in all configurations across all of these Ohio schools, because that data was available, and then ranked them, and middle schools were at the bottom consistently. It's just, middle schools are tough. Okay. So, all of that background, still is setting the table for what are we trying to accomplish and what are we trying to solve for? How are we going to do it? At the end of the day, we're going newer and fewer, we're trying to invest more in our kids and less in maintaining a bunch of buildings. The options are, you just keep your current configurations as they are and you reduce portfolio. Two, you move your 3/8s to K-8s as part of portfolio reduction. In many cases, 3/8s are maintained, so you don't have to close a K-2. Right? K-8s are established configuration, and many of the cases, those schools that host 3/8 can host a K-8. You eliminate a transition, we know transitions are hard on kids. So, another option, you add some K-8s as part of a portfolio reduction. Look at your elementary, middle, and high reduced, and you make sure that there's equitable access regionally to a K-8 option. Fourth option is you would move to a dominant, like a Baltimore, a dominant K-8, 9, 12 configuration. Logically, the options fall along a continuum like this, which we'd want to explore with the committee. Speaking of which, this meandering flowchart with very small text concludes with, in this committee, what we did is we do want to constitute a new committee with some fresh voices, fresh faces, and to look at this portfolio for that, what is the desired end state for Norfolk Public Schools? What does a rebuilt Norfolk Schools look like? To this end, this time, I have asked to have a partner in doing this work and have subbed some consult, for myself, subbed, worked to the Miles Agency, local communications team, to help with vetting these applications and to help with facilitating meetings. This is sensitive work, it's important work. I care deeply about it with you all, I've been here for a bit, but I do not live here. And it is important to have somebody here who is my partner in the communication and the community engagement, who does and who's a professional in this field. And so, I've subworked to her, to the Miles Agency to help with this. And they have helped tremendously with setting up this rubric for the committee and will help facilitate it. Our recommendations in consultation with Miles Agency is that the criteria include, we want direct relationships to the district, students, employees, those who have skin in the game. Citywide representation by ward, it's not going to be perfectly proportional, but we want to get close. We want to aim, we can take what we get in terms of applications in, and we want to be mindful of being representative. Relevant experience on this type of work indicating, while indicating openness to a fresh perspective. We ask questions in this, in the application to see willingness to, inability to handle tough conversations with folks who have different opinions than yourself, ourselves, and what were their responses to that. Stated commitment to objectivity and working with diverse voices, and a manageable committee size, can't have 100 people. So, looking at a manageable committee size, somewhere around two to three dozen. So, we have done our pass on the approximately 100 applications that were received after, I'm not going to read all of the machinations in this pipeline, but we received about 100 applications, or the division did. And in consultation with Miles, my team has gone through them and made some initial recommendations. And the plan is to discuss those in more detail with you later this month and to look into those next steps. But I want to conclude with this, and I know I've said it, but it bears repeating, I'm going to keep doing it. We are going to present you all a plan for a rebuilt Norfolk Public Schools. Consolidation must be a part of that. It is not the only part of that. Need to look at schools, if we were to start today, where your kids are, where you have school sites, how would you rebuild, where would you have schools? What makes the most sense? We want to start with that lens and be really focused on those three pillars. Condition, right size to allow investments in all kids every day for world-class education, and proximity to students. We're not, your population density, where they are, looking at where they are, we want to have schools close to that. So, that's my spiel and review of where we are today, and thank you for your time and happy to entertain any comments or questions.
Anybody have a quick question or comment? Quick. Okay.
Oh, I thought, I know there's lots of data, but I want to concentrate my question just on a particular one.
Yes, sir.
You were talking about the schools.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, by grade level, and you're using 5%. What would the?
You might, practically speaking, that would mean you would consolidate an additional elementary school or two division-wide. Because that percentage point is so little, that in many regions, one school, you close one school, it might be at 84, you close two schools, it might be at 93, right? So, it's that, division-wide, you might have one additional school. To nuance it a little bit, my rule of thumb is I want to plan at 85, because population fluctuations within 15% is a healthy way to be, understanding that you could be plus or minus 5% of that and be okay. Depending upon a variety of circumstances, because no one single set of data dictates the plan, you've got to look at region, you've got to look at a variety of factors. 85 plus or minus 5 is a good rule of thumb.
I was trying to figure out what data you used to send it.
Yes, sir, that's.
But that information there.
Yes, sir.
And so, I wanted to see what the value would be, if there is value.
Situationally specific, there may be cases in which that would make sense, but I like to say, sometimes it might make sense to stay at 80. Sometimes it might make sense to be at 90. It depends on the totality of data.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions, Ms. Vaseen?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Starks, for your presentation and a review of where we've been and where we are today. I think it's helpful, especially for our new board members. I have a couple of questions, so as part of, well, if we could, maybe I'll work backwards. So, with the committee, so the committee, right now, you've gone through the applications, working with this Miles, subconsultant that you all, Woolport, has brought on board. And they're a local agency that's going through them, and then will we get to see the recommended applicants and then, okay? And will the board have a say in any of that, or?
So, it's certainly up to the board, but I don't know if you want to get in the weeds of who's assigned to committees, but that's a board decision.
Yeah, and I, because we typically, I had inquired about this, and I thought, just like we do with our advisory committees, that I was under the impression that they were coming back to the board, so that's why I'm asking that question, because we do do that for other committees of the board. Because ultimately, we all make decisions around the right sizing, right? And we're representatives of that community, so that's why I asked that. I like the, I like that you used examples of school districts that, and I think for the benefit of this board, several of them are part of the Council of Great City Schools and also use the effective school board governance model. And so, we've talked about in the past with your visits here about having our student outcomes be at the focus of, you know, all the decision-making, right? And so, I would, I would like to see, or at least call attention to the fact that they use, the districts, especially Philadelphia and Baltimore City, have used their student outcomes goals and guardrails, which we called non-negotiables, as the center point of developing their right sizing plan. And so, I just wanted to put that out there as we continue our work around this, and that that should be at the center of our decision-making.
I 100%, agree.
Right. And then, and I know this is going to be, this is a big thing that we're, probably I can have time to get into, but also attendance zones and how that's going to be examined as part of this process.
That's a great question. My recommendation in phasing is that we start with the quest, we start with answering the question, what should the portfolio of schools be to maximize the investment per student while being proximate to where our families are? We answer that question, and then, once that's settled, we draw boundaries. Because the reality is, with the kind of rebuilding and reshaping that are, is likely given the decline in enrollment and the decline in conditions, despite best efforts, your buildings keep getting older and they need a lot of money. I see it likely rebuilding several and some changes to scale, that it would be best to do this in its entirety first, bless the plan, and then create a redistricting plan accordingly. Where I've seen some things get tripped up a little bit is when the two processes get conflated, and the notion is, well, we can't rebuild that school, we have to rebuild this school, because this boundary process will be harder than that boundary process. And what we're ultimately talking about is 100 years of a building being there when we're done. We want to really get that right, and then we'll do the boundary changes.
Okay. And my, my final question for now, for now, is, oh my gosh, like trying to get through everything in my head, and, my gosh, I just blanked on what that, oh, I know, I just looked right at it. So, with all of the work that's been done around windows, doors, roofs, all of that, is there an updated FCI?
There is. And that is, that is just been completed, a study that Rick had commissioned by HBA, Mike Ross. I received a preview on some of those, and you're going to receive a full brief here shortly. But yes, those FCI's have been updated based on the investments.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Our agenda has us doing two things at the same time. So, let's move on to 3.02 as quickly as we can. Feasibility study process update, comprehensive CTE high school. Mr. Poll.
Yes. Dr. Poll is going to be presenting an update as it relates to where we are with our process. And we also have with us today, Mr. Rob Burz, who is going to support the presentation with RRMM, and they were the contractor who won the contract to review the feasibility of our efforts in looking at transitioning Lake Taylor High School into a comprehensive CTE site.
Thank you, Dr. Bertsong. Good afternoon, Madam Chair DeCaligero, Vice Chairman Thomas, members of the board, and Dr. Bertsong. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on the study for a comprehensive high school, Lake Taylor High School. As you know, this initiative represents a significant investment in our students' future, equipping them with skills in high-demand career fields. I'd also, again, like to recognize Mr. Rob Burz over here to my left in the blue suit, with, he's the principal architect with RRMM, who was awarded the contract. The primary goal of the study is to modernize Lake Taylor High School into a comprehensive career and technical education, or CTE, high school, focusing on renewable energy solutions and advanced technology integration into the program. The program will build upon existing courses at the Norfolk Technical Center while expanding opportunities for students across the division. The redesigned facility would accommodate 1,300 to 1,400 students, ensuring capacity for both current enrollees at Lake Taylor High School as well as at the Norfolk Technical Center, and additional students interested in specialized CTE programs across the division. To achieve this transformation, our study will focus on stakeholder engagement, gathering input from students, parents, community members, and business partners. Program development, identifying necessary coursework and workforce-aligned training opportunities. Faculty or facility assessment, evaluating the existing building and determining space needs. Expansion and renovation planning, identifying modifications required to support the comprehensive CTE programming, and phasing and cost estimation outlining a clear feasible implementation plan. Engagement will, of course, be key to ensuring this project reflects the needs of students and the workforce. We will have student, parent, and community meetings, both in-person and virtual. We'll have business partner consultations to align with programs and industry demands, surveys, and interactive sessions to collect broad input, as well as drop-in sessions for community members to provide feedback on their own schedules, and scheduling some of those during school events so that we have more parent participation. Additionally, a detailed study of the existing facility will help us determine how spaces are currently used and what adjustments are necessary. Programming work will be held over multiple days in various formats to gather input, from one-on-one interviews to specifically designed sessions to gather input from larger groups, to timeframes arranged for community members to drop in to learn about the plan and offer input that fits their schedule. This will give the team an opportunity to learn specifics about current offerings, as well as potential offerings that match with local needs in high-need, high-paying areas to support the Virginia Department of Education's 3E framework around enrollment, employment, and enlistment. Once the programming phase is complete, we will begin conceptualizing how the building can be adapted to support the new comprehensive CTE high school. This phase will again involve stakeholders, ensuring their feedback shapes the proposed design and any necessary renovations or additions. The next phase will include more stakeholder involvement and feedback around creating a concept design of what renovations or possible additions may be needed to support the transition to a fully comprehensive CTE high school. And by fall of 2025, in time for the development of the SY27 budget, RRMM architects will present Norfolk Public Schools with a recommended concept design and cost estimate. This slide shows an overview of the project timeline, stakeholder engagement from February to April 2025, program development and space planning from March through May 2025, and final concept and cost estimate by September 2025. And this timeline ensures the study is completed efficiently with ample opportunity for input and refinement throughout the process. Thank you for your time and attention to this critical initiative. This project represents a transformative step in expanding career and technical education opportunities in Norfolk, for our Norfolk students. We welcome your questions and look forward to your continued support as we move forward with this study.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Ms. Vaseen? Real quick, so this, right now, you're not asking the board to take any action?
This is just an overview.
This is just an overview of the study that's.
The process.
To begin.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Okay. Not at this time, then.
That was my question as well, but I just want to say, kudos to get into this presentation
and.
Someone said we got to go quick.
Very thorough. Yeah, I'm excited to see what the outcome, even if I'm not sitting in this seat, I'm excited about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Is our first candidate ready?
And we just need a moment to transition.
Okay. Why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight. We have seven questions that we're going to ask, and each board member will take a turn asking a question. I'm going to ask the first question, if you have a copy of the questions in front of you, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Great. Please take a moment. Please take a moment to introduce yourself and explain why you're seeking an appointment for the Norfolk School Board. What skills or qualifications do you possess that you believe will help you as a member of the school board? What, if appointed, will be your priorities? I know it's, I know it's a mouthful.
Okay. Well, good day, everyone. My name is Corbin Brown. I am here today to show you all why I'm the best selection for the Norfolk Public Schools Ward Three, Board, Ward Seat. I am a Norfolk native. Sorry, give me one second.
You're fine.
I'm thankful for this opportunity. Things that make me qualified, I'm sorry, why I'm seeking this, this appointment to the school board is because of my passion for the community. I'm a Norfolk native, born and raised, I have a mother who taught into Norfolk Public Schools for over twenty-five years. So I was raised in the school system, seeing her work there in summer school days, seeing her grade papers overnight. I've been seeing this my whole life. I graduated from Norview High School, graduated from Norview and moved on to the Air Force. I did four years in the Air Force, served at multiple stations. I really enjoyed my time, I met a lot of different people. And I, I'm sorry, I can't, I got out the military and I decided to come back to my home, come back to my hometown and be able to pour in to them because I, I knew what it meant for me. When I was a child, I had a mentor. I had somebody, I had a, a village who was able to step in, be able to assist me. I seen the difference in my life and the ones who I grew up with, how it was, how I was able to have a different perspective and a vision for my life. So I wanted to be able to step in and be that vision for the community. So I, I came back here. I came back here to be the pour in. And to, to ask why I'm here, why I'm seeking this appointment, like I said, it's not just an opportunity, it's really a responsibility. I have been in place, going through what I, what I've done in the military, going through what I've done with the community, going through what I've done as a business owner, even had a storefront in Janus Shopping Center, Care More, Movers Boxes and More as a first-of-its-kind, moving, moving concierge service, we rented U-Haul trucks and also had boxes and packaging materials, things for sale as well. But I always had a passion for my city, really, just understanding that it was jewels here. A lot of times very much overlooked, but I, I understood it was really something in the water. So I'm seeking this position, like I said, for the, for the responsibility to take on and encourage the youth to be able to see something and see the power within theirselves the same way I was able to find that within myself. The skills and qualifications that I possess, I would say, like I said, my passion, my, my community involvement and the way I, my responsibility, I'm a father of four. All four of my children attend Norfolk Public Schools. They're all girls, so they're very much needed, very much, so much attention. But it's, it's gave me so much skills in just growing as a person, growing as a man, really understanding myself. So that is one of my skills, right? There's being able to deal with growing children. My oldest are twelve, no, I'm sorry, their oldest are eleven, they're twins, my next is ten, and then my youngest is seven. So we have, I have all different age ranges. Having to be able to learn about them and myself throughout the process of having them while also running a business, while also being a husband, while being a fiance. So to, to understand how to maneuver with the youth and understand who I am, it gave me different skills that I had to possess. I had to learn. It was no, it was no guidebook on what to do, on how to, how to become this man. But I, I figured it out and that's what I do. I figure things out. Even if I don't know it, I will figure it out. You ask me a question, if I don't know, I will let you know I do not know right now, but I will get that answer for you and I will get it done. When I opened my first business, I did not know anybody who had a business storefront, but I figured it out and I got it done. I didn't know how to get a U-Haul contract, a multi-million or billion-dollar industry. I didn't know how to do those, but I figured it out on my own. Of course, I had support, that was the biggest thing, the support, not necessarily somebody telling me what to do, but the support. So that, that is a big, big thing that I would say is a, a skill that I possess that qualifies me for this position. Also, me working inside of the school systems. With my nonprofit, Care More Community Group, I've been able to work inside of multiple schools and teach actually programs that we have produced. One of the programs called Finding Purpose Through Art, about finding your purpose, who you are, what makes you valuable to the world. And art, you know, is a very valuable way of learning to express yourself and release whatever you're dealing with. Mental health is very big to me, very big. Going into the military, I seen a lot, I did a lot. Coming in, coming up from Norfolk, I seen a lot and did a lot. I was raised around a lot of different people, a lot of different types of people that forced me to figure out, okay, what am I here for? Not just follow what I see around me, but figure out what I can do to, to make an impact on this world. And I'm, I'm not trying to be very long-winded on this question, but I just say, like I said, I, I have the skills that I, that I've learned over the years, whether it's military, whether it's community involvement, whether it's being a business owner or being a father. I have qualified myself to, to step into this position. Okay? And if appointed, what would be my priorities? Except mental health is very important to me. I have a wellness company called Care More on Sundays. We just did a hike this past Sunday in Richmond, Virginia. I took a group of people, well, I had, I had a group of about fifteen, fifteen to twenty people. We did a hike around Richmond for about six miles. Getting outside in nature, getting connected to yourself, getting connected to who you are, what, getting back to the simple parts of life. I feel like it's very much overcomplicated of what's going on around the world and it's just, and it's affecting us in ways that we don't even understand. So my, for mental health is something that's very big to me, that I will be presenting to the, well, adding to the school board as an asset. My views on, my perspective on it, me going through it, you know, really understanding the benefits of therapy, the benefits of working together with others, the benefits of communicating with others. So that, that will be a huge thing, that'll be a priority for me. Seeing that the youth, because I understand, the youth coming into the schools, it's not just that they're not understanding what to do when it comes to their education, they're not understanding what's going on inside of them, how they're feeling when they're waking up, when they're going to school. Since COVID, before COVID, it was already a little hectic, but since COVID, it has changed a lot, the dynamics of everything has changed. Technology has improved, they learn so much just from technology, but they, but they still don't know about who they are. So they have the access to the information, but they haven't matured and grown spiritually, emotionally inside of them. So mental health will be a big thing that I'm bringing in. And another piece, another priority that I'll be, I'm sorry, that I'll be mentioning would be the importance of working as a community. Like I said, my nonprofit is called Care More Community. This, that wasn't by accident, it's because I really care for my community. I've had this since 2017. So the involvement of the school with the community, being that, being a point of contact, being a bridge for the community and the schools, being a bridge for, yeah, like I said, the schools and, and the community, the youth and the adults. It's a lot of separation with the, the children and adults. So community and wellness would be what my priority, priorities are coming into the school board.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, could I make a point of just clarifying?
Yes.
So for, for the interview questions, will we be limiting questions for two, two minutes each question or are we?
We need, we do, we do need to try to limit responses
Okay.
To about two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Yes. Sorry about that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Again, good evening. My name is Tiffany Buffalo, I'm a school board member here of Norfolk Public Schools, and I have the second question. Please describe a time you had to make a difficult ethical decision and how you navigated it?
In 2022, I really found, I, I was, I was in the process of running my business, Care More Movers, in Janus Shopping Center. Had it, had it for five years at that time. Very successful. I was able to employ multiple people from my community, very much take my family and put us in a different position. But I found that I, I was missing something inside. I was missing that purpose I was, I was telling you. When I started the company, it was, okay, I need to be financially responsible, let me do something to take care of myself and my family. So I started with the, the, the vision of, okay, the, the money, but I, that wasn't enough. So in 2022, I had been in the process of finding myself, that's when I was introduced to things like meditation and plant-based eating and different ways of taking care of myself and understanding who I was. And it got me to a point of understanding, okay, yes, this is successful, but it's time to move on. And I, and I made a decision in 2022 to move on from my, from my moving company and to go full-time in my nonprofit, Care More Community Group. Not understanding or not knowing how I'll be able to take care of myself, how the money would be to come in, but knowing that that was my mission for the world. That was what I was good at giving. Because during the time of COVID, when recreation centers closed, that's who I used to partner with. So when it closed, I started using my store actually for a community center. So seeing the impact and seeing how it made me feel, it, I knew, okay, this is it, this is the core right here. And that was actually, my nonprofit was something I started before my moving company, but it was nothing that I was always heavily invested in, was just, I'm going to do this because I know I'm supposed to do, I, I feel it. But it was nothing that I was just giving my all to. So I decided to make the decision to walk away from my moving company and go full-term into the nonprofit. And that, that same year, I'm sorry, that was the summer, that, I'm sorry, that was before the summer, that following summer, I was able to get a contract to be working inside the schools, you know, contracted with United Way, to be able to present my program. But that was something I didn't even know was coming. But it was for me to take that step, that step of unknown, walking in faith by my vision to go forward and make that decision, to leave behind what I started for something new, a new opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ken. Mr. Colonel Paulson.
It's Colonel Paulson, and I have a question. How, first of all, thank you for your service, military service.
Thank you, sir.
How will you engage the community and strengthen our transparency around our decision-making process? There is always lots of skepticism and not understanding what we've done. And how would you help get the message to your community?
How will I engage the community and strengthen the transparency? Well, I feel like you all definitely try to engage the community, whether it's having these live broadcasts, whether the public can be present or even watching online. But a lot of times that, I feel the, the missing piece may be the feeling of connection, the feeling of connection to the board, not stating that, that hasn't already been in place, but I would be able to really put that connection with the community, them understanding who I am and knowing my authenticity, knowing the work that I've already done and the work that I will still be doing. So when it, when I, when they see me during an event or they see me on the school board, they see me anywhere in the streets, they will be able to ask me questions. And of course, I might not always, I'm not going to tell them what we're going to do, but I will be able to transparently tell them what we have in plan, what's, what is going on, what, what is the vision? Would I engage the community? So I will also be to offer, like I said, I've hosted events, I will also be to put together more community-engaged events where it's, where it's centered around school, school decisions, outside of, well, not outside of what we're, we're already doing, but I would be able to mention these things. Like, like I said, I already mentioned, mentioned mental wealth, I, mental health, I mentioned the youth, I mentioned the importance of them when I'm, when we're having these events and these certain gatherings. But being that I will be in this position, they will be looking to me for certain answers. So I would be able to just transparently tell them what we have going on and strengthen the transparency around decision-making process. Yeah, just going back to saying, just the, the community involvement, being in, being in the community, being, being there when they're, when they're asking.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Nice to meet you. So I have the next question. The Norfolk School Board has adopted goals focused on student outcomes. How can a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are implemented?
The school board will be to know if the goals are being accomplished by the results that we see. We, we see our data, we look at the data, and we see what, what we have put in place and seeing what has happened. I know one of our, one of our issues for, for the, for, in the school system was attendance. I see that we just had the school, the attendance challenge and that we see that the data improved by just having this challenge. So seeing what works and continuing, continuing the blueprint, seeing what doesn't work and scrapping it, moving on to the next solution. What, what can we do next? What, what is, or, or not even necessarily scrapping, but trying to add to it, rever, revising it, seeing what, what needs to be done. So how, that is, that is one way to just know if it's being accomplished, really just seeing the data. And also by speaking to the community, asking how they feel, seeing their, their views on what we've already adapted, speaking on even just like I said, the attendance challenge, asking the teachers, asking the students, how did you feel about that? What made you want to come to school? What made you want to be a part of this challenge? And identifying these things and then being able to move on and make an even more deliberate decision on the next, on the next goal. And see if the policies are implemented, how our school board's goals are being accomplished and the policies are being implemented. How can we see if policies are being implemented? By speaking, speaking with the ones who are having to follow the policies, the staff, being involved, not telling them what we're going to do, but, but listening to what their concerns are, seeing if, okay, that was something that we already addressed, why hasn't that been, okay, well, now we can bring it back to the board, we can speak on it now and bring it back to the superintendent and see if anything of the policies maybe be, maybe be revised. So yes, just speaking with the children, speaking with the staff and the, and other teachers to be able to see what has already been done and their, their view on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Brown.
Hello.
What do you believe are the greatest challenges currently facing the school division? What do you see as the board's role in addressing these challenges? What do you see as administration's role in addressing these challenges?
Start with the first question. What do I believe are the greatest challenges we're currently facing? Overpopulation of the classrooms, a lot of students and not enough teachers. And I, and I, and I know that we have plans even to close some of the schools and to be able to bring more students inside some of the classroom, but then have more teachers inside these schools so it'll be less vacancies. With the, with too many children inside the schools is making it harder for the children to learn, not enough children, children aren't able to get the one-on-one counseling or the one-on-one sessions that they're, they're needing. They're also not able to really express how they're feeling, like I was going back to that mental, that mental well-being. They're coming in there and the class is, is so large and they, they've been dealing with stuffs all day, then they're not even able to maybe express it to the teacher because they might be a quiet child or a child who maybe not understand how to communicate. And then teaching, teaching is over, is, is very much overstimulating for the teachers, not knowing how to, well, not saying they're not knowing how to, but not being able to really teach the children because they have so many at one time, they all need their attention at once. And of course, we understand how the vacancies of each classroom, well, I'm sorry, vacancy and having to bring in substitutes, substitutes. I know my daughter had to have a substitute for a couple months last year just because her teacher went out and it, and it did affect her. Yeah, it definitely did affect her. So I would definitely say that overpopulation of the classrooms and needing to consolidate the, the schools. Also, of course, the attendance, being able to get the children inside the school, making them interested, what, making them want to come to school, making them want to stay in school, making the parents feel that we actually care to actually send the children to school. So definitely attendance consolidation. It's the school division. And then just the, the connection, the connection between the community and the, not just the staff of the school, but the school board as well and administration of the school board. So that would be the biggest, greatest challenges that I would say that the school is facing.
It's two minutes, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Martin. Dr. Martin.
Hi, Mr. Brown.
Good day.
Good to meet you. So my question is, how do you plan to address disparities in student achievement and ensure that all students, regardless of background, have access to high-quality education and resources?
How do I plan to address disparities in student achievement, ensure that all students? Understanding that we come, children come from different backgrounds and some children learn differently. They, they come from homes where it might be more hectic, some children come from homes where, like myself, had a teacher in there who was able to assist them on, on certain issues. So to, to address these issues and to improve our student achievement, definitely highlighting alumni, definitely enriching the children and, and highlighting the, the strengths that they have, though. definitely enriching the children and highlighting the strengths that they have, though. I know we have award ceremonies for honor rolls, but really highlighting every step along the way. What makes, so they feel, so sometimes you need like a small, a task to work for. So the children have something to work for, other than just saying, I want to get my As and Bs. But, okay, what am I working for every single day? That goes back to even attendance, okay, I'm working towards this so I can, I want to be here. I'm working towards this because I see, I see somebody who's already came from where I am. I see some, I see people who already came from where I am, and they've been able to be successful. So being able to, hmm. Adjust student achievement. Just speaking with the children, speaking with the community, speaking with the parents. Having times where we can have that parent engagement to be able to understand what their child might need, what they're looking for, and understanding what they, how they're feeling about whatever's going on. I know they have PTA meetings and everything already, and we're putting together things. But just continuing to.
Two minutes.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any additional items that you would like to share with the board?
I would just like to say again, I am grateful for being selected for this opportunity. And when you look at me, I know I look different, I talk different, I may walk different, but that's really example of Norfolk, we are different. I grew up around people who fell victim to drugs, alcohol, the prison system. But I've grown into a father who associates with council members, delegates, community leaders, and business owners. When I am selected as a newly-appointed Ward Three board member, I won't only represent my ward, but I'll be a proud representation of what can grow and thrive from the city of Norfolk. So thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let's get up.
Yes, that's good. Ms. Tanner's gonna.
And again, thank you for your service.
I'm gonna let them each know that after about two minutes, Alfreda will give them the warning and then they can take a few seconds to wrap up.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, new at this, so.
Yeah, I was thinking, wait, where's the time?
It didn't occur to me, so thank you for putting that out.
I was thinking.
Good evening, Mr. Forrest.
Hello, how's everyone doing today?
Good evening. My name is Sarah DeCaligero, I am the chair of the school board. Each school board member will ask you a question, you'll have about two minutes to answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Thomas here will give you a little bit of a warning, and at that point, please wrap up your thoughts.
Yes, ma'am, will do.
Now, I know this first question is very hard to do in two minutes, so you should have a copy of the questions in front of you.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
All right, I will start. Please take a moment to introduce yourself and explain why you're seeking an appointment for the Norfolk School Board. What skills or qualifications do you possess that you believe will help you as a member of the school board? And what, if appointed, will be your priorities?
My name is Cortez Forrest, I go by Corey Forrest. I am an award-winning author of numerous magazines and also wrote a book, working on my second book now. I am a father of an honor student here in Norfolk Public Schools. I myself am a product of Norfolk Public Schools as well, going from elementary school all the way up until high school, where actually this evening, I did see one of my former high school teachers, Mr., excuse me, Dr. Poe, who, again, and I actually showed him the message that he wrote to me in my high school yearbook. So again, we kind of had a bit of a full circle moment today. Again, he was very proud of my accomplishments that I did, kind of go over those with him today. So in addition to that, I'm also a mentor, I'm a youth mentor, prior to me becoming a youth, well, actually, I've always done this, but mentoring in my community. I do believe in giving back to the community, they did do so much good in my life here today. And with that being said, my mentoring program, like I said, I've been working with Norfolk Public Schools. I work with a few churches and other organizations. I have logged over 400 hours of volunteer hours with the school board alone from February of 2023 until current. Again, that's over 450 hours of, I've already logged of volunteer work. I'm also a basketball coach, I coach the Sherwood Forest Knights basketball team, ten-year-old boys. In addition to that, I'm also a local business owner. I have a website, I'm a website developer as well. I do have a website where I post inspirational messages to my readers and followers and subscribers. So again, I do believe in service and giving back to my community. I'm also a member, well, I was a member, but still currently, of the Career Technical Education.
Two minutes.
Career Technical Education. So again, those are just a few of my many, many skills and qualifications that I do have.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Forrest. My name is Tiffany Buffalo, I'm a school board member. I have the second question. Please describe a time you had to make a difficult ethical decision and how you navigated it.
Again, one of the things I do teach my mentoring students is the importance of having integrity. We do have seven different modules that we kind of cover and go over. So again, I always tell them about doing the right thing. And just recently, I had a situation where, again, one of my mentees, also one of my students on my basketball team, had a situation in school, there was a student who, he made her feel uncomfortable. And so like I said, with him being one of my students, and this is just one of the students I actually interact with, and I have tons of students who just adore me across the school. But I had to actually make a decision of, number one, protecting her innocence or her privacy by reporting that to, well, number one, not having this young man kind of interfere with that, but also taking her to her teacher, number one. Again, I do believe in the chain of command, taking her to a teacher first and foremost, and then taking her to the office staff and let them know. And then upon that, again, same thing, kind of letting the school council know as well. I do work directly with school counselors, law enforcement individuals. Again, I'm very active in the community, so when it comes to ethics, that is something that I definitely stand by.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I'm Colonel Paulson. My question is, how will you engage the community and strengthen the transparency around the Norfolk Public Schools' decision-making process?
Again, I do believe there has to be a level and line of communication between all parties involved, being parents, community organizers, and those who live in the community as well as the school staff. So again, just being able to listen, take everyone's ideas to kind of take those things to heart and then kind of execute those various things. So again, just being able to work closely with everyone involved and then listening to what needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Hello, Mr. Forrest, my name's Tanya Bessine, I'm also one of the school board members. So the Norfolk School Board has adopted goals focused on student outcomes. How can a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are implemented?
Okay, again. We'll know if the goals are being accomplished by our students. Again, I believe that our students do. Again, me being a part of Norfolk Public Schools, the students actually are the ones who pretty much are the result of the education that they do receive. So with that being said, implementing policies, listening to the students, staff. And again, I just believe everything has to be in synchronicity where everyone kind of works together and listens together, just to make sure all dots are, all i's are dotted and t's are crossed, excuse me.
Okay.
Okay. How you doing, Mr. Forrest?
Well, ma'am, thank you.
What do you believe are the greatest challenges currently facing the school division? What do you see as the board's role in addressing these challenges? What do you see as administration's role in addressing these challenges?
One of the greatest challenges currently facing the school division is behaviors and attendance. Again, with my role, again, being active in the community, I take a different approach. When I educate the children that I interact with, I believe that one of the things that I do is almost like I like to take and put the medicine in the candy. So I use an informational exercise, and I'll also educate them along with that. Again, whether it's in basketball or at the rec center or wherever I may be, again, always let them know how things may be. And then also, we kind of go over things, how we can execute a plan to kind of put things in order.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Forrest, my name's Adele Martin. My question is, how do you plan to address disparities in student achievement and ensure that all students, regardless of background, have access to high-quality education and resources?
By being a resource in itself. Again, to listen, part of my program is, we do it and we lead with love, L-O-V-E. We listen with an open heart, we validate, and then we empower and educate. And so those same principles I use there, I also use everywhere I go, listening with an open mind, open heart, because everyone has, you know, things, perception, things that they kind of go about doing things. And then we validate or value what they may say, and then we empower and educate. Because what I do believe is, again, the way things go, sometimes with our young people, they kind of are impulsive in the way they do things, and sometimes it takes somebody who is more influential and more someone they can kind of relate to, to kind of get them on the right path.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Finally, do you have any additional items that you would like to share with the board?
Number one, I am grateful for this opportunity to be sitting before you all today. And like I said, I just, again, my thing is, I love serving, I do believe in serving. So again, I just want to serve, and I am with service, and that is all I have today.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time this evening, for coming in and speaking with us.
Thank you.
Ms. Tanner will escort you.
Thank you.
Same thing, because I've been trying my hardest to pronounce yours.
DeCaligero.
DeCaligero. All right, there we go, awesome.
So, Mr. Eng, my name is Sarah DeCaligero, I am the chair of the board. Each board member will ask you a question, and you have about two minutes to respond. Alfreda will, Ms. Thomas, I'm sorry, I'm so casual. Ms. Thomas will give you a heads up that you've hit your two minutes, so then please wrap up your thoughts as quickly as possible. I'm going to start with the first question. It's a very hard question to do in two minutes, so take your, take a moment to think how you want to respond. And you should have a copy of the questions in front of you.
Yes, I do.
Please take a moment to introduce yourself and explain why you're seeking an appointment for the Norfolk School Board. What skills or qualifications do you possess that you believe will help you help as a member of the school board, and what, if appointed, will be your priorities?
Excellent question. So first off, thank you so much for the opportunity to come here, to speak before you, for the opportunity to potentially be Ward Three's representative of the Norfolk School Board. I'm Jason Eng, I am a native of Martinsville, Virginia. I have been in Norfolk for 15 years, I've been invested in this community and working through various community organizations over those 15 years. Going forward, I work for the United Way, I provide strategic guidance in our community investment portfolio to local Health and Human Services nonprofits. And some of the skills that I would be able to bring is being, I'm a strategist. I like to tackle what those problems are, bring the thinkers and the movers in the room that have the problems and tackling those and getting strategies to get us out into the community. Some of the other qualifications that I have, I would say grant management. I oversee over $6 million in community funds that go out to all local Health and Human Services organizations, as well as physical responsibility and data analysis. And then just rounding us off on the question of, if selected, what would be my priorities? If selected to this position, my priorities are to make sure that we take care of all 27,000 students in Norfolk Public Schools, make sure that we address our teachers' concerns, administrators, and making sure that we uphold the standards and excellence of Norfolk Public Schools because education is the bedrock and the foundation of which our nation has been on and is the foundation and bedrock to make our community move forward.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'm very impressed that you did that in two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Tiffany Buffalo, I'm a school board member. I have the second question. Please describe a time you had to make a difficult ethical decision and how you navigated it.
Oh, oh, good one, good one, good one, difficult decisions all the time. So being in my current capacity as Director of Community Investments, we go through a community-led process. community-led process, volunteer-led process. A community came, they had a strong community impact in what they were doing in the city of Norfolk and throughout the 757. However, they were not able to articulate and produce the information into actual quantifiable data. And so in doing that, I had to look at, look at the impact that they were doing, and then look at, is it going to still be good if they're not going to be able to meet the needs and be able to get the good return on investment and maximizing the investment, the dollars that we've put in? And so I made the decision that we must uphold the standards, that we don't make any exceptions, and make sure that the community understands and is transparent that every dollar that goes in, that those dollars have been effectively managed and are strategic in going out into the community. So, that's where I've had to make some difficult decisions.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good evening. I'm Colonel Paulson. My question is, how will you engage the community and strengthen the transparency around the NPS decision-making process?
Excellent. First off, thank you so much for your service, Colonel. I definitely appreciate you. This is my first time learning about you and meeting you. I've done a little research on you, of course. But for me, on my question on what I would do in strengthening transparency, we have to be an open school board. We have to work collaboratively with our, collaboratively with our school systems, all of our schools, all of our parents, all of our stakeholders who have an invested interest in the city of Norfolk, and ensuring that our students get the best high-quality education. And so that means that if a person comes here, like yesterday, not yesterday, when the last work session saying, hey, I have a four-year request, making sure that we honor that four-year request and uphold the standards of the law that allow us to give that information. And then also to strengthen transparency, talking with our parents, meeting them where they are. That's what we have to do. We have to meet our parents and ensure we increase and encourage parental participation, so that if our parents succeed, our students will succeed. And so that is where I believe that we will be able to increase transparency, being able to have public hearings such as this, and allow anyone in our community to come, ask any candidates, interview, any questions, address their questions, and then you as a board, hopefully if I'm with you, alongside you, to be able to tackle those issues and be able to give them good, clear, executable action plans to move our community forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, how are you?
Doing good. Hey there.
I'm Tanya Bassin, and I have the next question for you. So the Norfolk School Board has adopted goals focused on student outcomes. How can a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are implemented?
Excellent question. So, to see, let me go back to the question, make sure I got it correct here. So how do you plan to, no, that's, that's a different question. What do you believe is the greatest challenges facing our schools? No, we're on question four, I'm sorry.
Question four, yes.
So adopting goals. So what I would like to do if selected is work with you to make sure that we implement goals that are effective and equitable across all school, all schools. Everything from Booker T. Washington all the way down to Mary Calcutt. I want to ensure that we're able to get measurable outcomes. So to do that, we have to look at student attendance, we need to look at student grades, we need to look at, look at satisfaction surveys from our teachers, we need to survey our students, and also surveying our parents as well, to get to see if the policies that we are implementing behind that dais is effective and efficient, and making sure that we're doing the best for our students, administrators, and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you doing, Mr. Eng?
Doing good, Ms. Thomas, how are you doing?
I'm doing wonderful. What do you believe are the greatest challenges currently facing the school division? What do you see as the board's role in addressing these challenges? What do you see as administration's role in addressing these challenges?
Excellent question. So there are a plethora of different challenges, but to prioritize those out, we have an aging infrastructure in Norfolk Public Schools. Many of our schools that we've invested in, 50 years ago, the life cycle of those buildings are now coming due, and we're putting Band-Aids on them. So we have to look at those, those infrastructures to make sure that they are conducive environments for our students. We need to address teacher recruitment and attention, making sure that we go where other school systems may have not traditionally went to recruit talented teachers. And then also, we need to address absenteeism. We need to get down to what are the root causes of absenteeism. And like I said, with you, Colonel, to make sure that we meet our parents where they are, this is something that happens and starts at home. And to address that, we have to ask the parents, what can we do as a school system to ensure that you, as a parent, are getting all the support you need? Because if you're getting the support, then your child will get the support they need to come to school on time and get a high-quality education.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Eng, how are you?
Doing good.
Good. All right. My question is, how do you plan to address disparities in student achievement and ensure that all students, regardless of background, have access to high-quality education and resources?
Good question. So there are a lot of different disparities that we can address. I don't have, I only have two minutes, so I don't have enough time. But some of those will be our non-English-speaking students. I am very, very happy with the board's position on opening up Rosemont, and that it will be a center for our non-English students to be able to go with their families. That will address the disparity when our students that cannot speak English now have access to the tools and technologies to make them warm and welcoming, it's an inclusive environment. Secondly, also addressing our reading, writing, and mathematics scores. We have made some progress in the last years, but we still have some ways to go. That's, that's a true statement from the data that has been supplied by the Department of Education, from our parents, from our students, our administrators. But I believe that we can address those disparities that are between African-American students that are reading at a lower grade level than their counterparts, that are Hispanic and white, oh, that are Hispanic and are white. I believe that we can bridge those gaps by partnering with nonprofit organizations to help in after-school and before-school programming, as well as also bringing in those counterparts and stakeholders here in Norfolk Public Schools to address those stakeholders, making sure we have the right consultants, make sure we have the right thinkers, the right strategists, the right people who have a fully invested interest, and making sure that we narrow the gaps between all of our students, and particularly our students with disabilities. We have to make sure that they feel included, valued here in Norfolk Public Schools.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Do you have any additional items that you would like to share with the board?
Yes. So I have met with you, many of you, worked with you throughout different various things throughout the years. I hope that I am a person that is selected for this role. I look forward to working alongside you and addressing the many different challenges that we do have in our Norfolk Public Schools. I am a collaborative team player. I want to ensure that we hear all voices that come to the room, and that we make sure that we make good decisions that move our school system forward for all of our students, not for one just particular student, for all. I want to make sure that every student is heard, seen, and valued, and that no matter what part of Norfolk that you live in, in 23513 or 23504, that you are receiving a high-quality education, and you are prepared to go out into this world as a successful human being.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Powell.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah DeCaligero. I am the chair of the school board. Each member of the school board will ask you a question.
Okay.
You have about two minutes to respond. Ms. Thomas here will give you a heads up that you've hit your two minutes.
Great.
And then just wrap up your thoughts as quickly as you can.
Absolutely, okay.
I'm going to take the first question.
Okay.
And it, it might be difficult to respond to in two minutes, so just take a minute to think about your response.
Okay.
Please take a moment to introduce yourself and explain why you're seeking an appointment to the Norfolk School Board. What skills or qualifications do you possess that you believe will help you as a member of the school board? What, if appointed, will be your priorities?
Okay. I'm ready to answer that. So my main interest is that I am a parent in the Norfolk Public School District, and also a huge community leader in both the nonprofit space, also in the higher education space, as I also lead an advisory board at ODU. So education has always been extremely important to me. My parents were very involved in my educational process. This is simply an extension of who I am. As a nonprofit leader, I am extremely cognizant and understanding of the challenges of, you know, balancing governance and managerial aspects of any organization. Obviously, my organization's a private nonprofit, so a little bit different from a public school system, but I think a lot of the skills are transferable, understanding that, you know, the board is largely there to govern, to advise, to lend volunteerism and advocacy, and to really support the staff in what they do, rather than trying to enter into those management areas. And I believe at my organization at least, we have a good balance of that, and I think that I can bring those skills to bear in this position. As far as priorities, I was reviewing y'all's strategic plan, and I think the priorities that are under both the community and the safety and climate areas of your strategic plan most resonate with me. Specifically, I am very good at stakeholder engagement, particularly with stakeholders who have either felt disenfranchised, less engaged than perhaps they would like, or the organization that's trying to engage them would like. I am very good at simply continuing to approach those who should be involved, and convincing them that their voice is meaningful and should be heard. I also think that in the safety and climate areas, because I am embedded in the nonprofit community, there are a lot of intersections and cooperation that can be done with the agencies that already serve our community and the public school system to address some of your priorities, such as increased physical
Two minutes.
Awesome. And, and other increases in social services. So there you go.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Powell. Tiffany Buffalo, school board member. I have the second question. Please describe a time you had to make a difficult ethical decision and how you navigated it.
Absolutely. So as a fundraiser, I have to make ethical decisions on a regular basis. There is nothing that brings out ethics more than, I think, money. And so I have sometimes had to administrate grants that are government grants, which means that we're dealing with taxpayer dollars. And there have definitely been instances where situations have come up that have made that a little bit sticky. I actually resigned from a previous position because management was pressuring me to basically scorch earth a relationship with a grant funder that was, involved government dollars. And I simply explained to them that we were either going to use the money the way that we had said that we would, or we were going to give them, or we were going to give up the grant, or I was going to resign. Those were, those were the options. And I ended up resigning. It was a very difficult decision, but I believe very strongly in, you know, when we say we're going to do something, we're going to do it. So I have absolutely no problem with making the difficult call, and standing on business, as the kids like to say, if it comes down to that.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Colonel Paulson. My question for you is, how will you engage the community and strengthen the transparency around the NPS decision-making process?
Yeah. So going back to what I was saying, question one, I think that there's something to be said for identifying who's not at the table, whose voices we aren't hearing, pursuing them, and then pursuing them until they are willing to engage with us. I think that, you know, sometimes when we go to do advocacy, or we go to engage stakeholders, it can be very easy to maybe give up if they're resistant, or if they're not sure that their voice really matters. And what I have found is that sometimes it's taken me years to engage certain stakeholders that I knew needed to be part of the process, and for whatever reason, they felt disenfranchised, or they felt unvalued by the organization, or by past leadership, or whatever it was. And I'm, I'm pretty obstinate in that. I will, I, I won't, you know, I won't cross boundaries, but I will certainly continue to approach and continue to say like, hey, your voice matters here. And so I think that, you know, we identify who isn't at the table, and then we figure out where they are, what are the community groups or stakeholder groups that they are already part of. It could be a house of worship, it could be all kinds of things, and then we continue to go to those venues and invite them into the process. I think that iterates in a lot of different ways, depending on what the situation is, whether we're drawing them into committee work, or to speak at a meeting, or something like that, but I have absolutely no problem doing that. It's actually something that I very much enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Powell. My name's Tanya Bassin, one of the school board members. The Norfolk School Board has adopted goals focused on student outcomes. How can a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are implemented?
So getting back to what I was saying earlier about the balance between governance and management, I think that this is where, especially in committee work, it's really important to be engaging with our staff. And, you know, as, as in my organization, I'm the staff member, of course, and I'm working with my board. And, you know, I think that fortunately, I am blessed with a board that constantly listens to the staff. We bring, you know, our data and our measures. I am actually a huge fan of data and measures, and I think it makes a lot of sense when governance and management can agree on what those measures are, report on them regularly, be able to freely ask questions about the data set, or about what's being reported. It's something that I practice at my own organization, and I, you know, I'm not, I am unsure of y'all's, you know, practice of that in committee specifically, where I think it's probably most useful. But certainly that is, that is where I look first, is I think that everyone needs to agree on what the, the measures of excellence and progress are, and then report on those regularly, and be able to have ongoing discussion.
Hi, Ms. Powell. My name is Alfreda Thomas. What do you believe are the greatest challenges currently facing the school division? What do you see as the board's role in addressing these challenges? What do you see as administration's role in addressing these challenges?
So I think our greatest challenge is occurring right this minute at the federal level, and I think that there's a lot of uncertainty for all levels and all stakeholders in the public school system, whether you're a parent, student, administration, or governance and board. So I honestly, you know, one of the reasons that I applied to this position was because I, I really feel strongly about what is happening in our federal government, possible future of the DOE, and, and I want to do whatever I can to protect the Norfolk Public School System, because I believe in the public school system. As far as the board's role, I, I said it earlier, I'll say it again, I think advocacy is a huge part of what we do, championing, being the face, talking to the press, our politicians. As far as administration, I was speaking earlier about data sets, outcomes, that type of thing. I love it when I see a staff of any organization who is able to demonstrate value using data. It's hard to argue with numbers, even though sometimes people will ignore them anyway, but I think that, you know, if administration can be really, really clear about what they are accomplishing, and what, you know, and the if-then statements of, if such and such program is eliminated, what happens then? Being able to be super clear about that with our elected officials, with our constituents, with our philanthropic, philanthropic community here in Norfolk is going to be really vital in the years to come.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hi, Ms. Powell. I'm Adele Martin. I'm going to ask you the next question. How do you plan to address disparities in student achievement and ensure that all students, regardless of background, have access to high-quality education and resources?
So I think that's like a huge question. I'll get a magic wand first, but if that fails, then I, again, I'll speak to how I'm embedded in the nonprofit community here. I think Hampton Roads has an incredible philanthropic presence and a number of services funded by that philanthropic presence that that is unusual for a community our size. Like, if you think about population size per capita, all that kind of thing. The depth and breadth of services that we enjoy here is amazing. And I think, you know, we do the best we can as an administration, as a board, as a public school system, and then we bring in what we need. And having all of that cooperation with the rest of our community only makes that stronger. I think that's the broadest and most efficient way to answer that question because I, you know, I think that the level of disparities and the intricacies of that are too complicated to address in two minutes. But, you know, certainly something that I would look forward to addressing on an issue-by-issue basis.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you have any additional items that you would like to share with the board?
I will just say that I have children in elementary, middle, and high school levels right now. I have worked with 504 Special Education parts of this division. I have worked, you know, I've been in administrative offices. I have emailed principals and teachers for advocacy reasons, for congratulatory reasons, for all kinds of things. And, you know, so I have definitely met challenges with Norfolk Public School and also seen some of its best. And I still believe, like I said earlier, that our public school system is one of the best parts of our democracy, of our municipalities. And I think that, you know, it deserves to be protected. And so that is just what I will leave you with as far as like my ethos, why I'm here today and why I applied to this position.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Welcome, Mr. Smith.
Glad to be here.
My name is Sarah Caligero. I am the Chair of the Board. Each board member will ask you a question. Please take about two minutes to respond. Ms. Thomas will let you know when your two minutes is up and then just wrap up your thoughts as soon as you can.
Okay.
The questions, should a copy of the questions are in front of you? Okay, I'm going to ask the first question. Please take a moment to introduce yourself and explain why you're seeking an appointment for the Norfolk School Board. What skills or qualifications do you possess that you believe will help you as a member of the school board? And what if appointed will be your priorities?
Thank you so much for that question. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Siobhan Smith. I'm a proud lifetime resident of Norfolk, Virginia. I've lived in my community for my entire life, as well as been a proud student of Granby High School, where I graduated in the year of 2015 with an advanced diploma. Further from that, I served in many areas in my community, including being the youth board member, being the chaplain, and then moving forward to being the president of the youth board. I was able to learn so much with dealing with the adult board, if I can say that. With dealing with them, I dealt with many controversies as well as different avenues of resolutions for that controversy. Moving forward, after I graduated, I was asked to join the executive board of my civic league, where I went further to become the vice president unanimously by vote of the civic league. Once that occurred, I came in and stepped up as president when I stepped down. And throughout that, I was re-elected as president of the civic league. I've served the civic league since 2021 as their president and proudly served for over 15 years in this civic league. I've learned throughout so much of being a community stakeholder in that ward as a residence. Not only that, I am a proud member of the United Holy Church of America, where I served in the youth department. With that, I have dealt with dealing with as treasurer, where I've dealt with creating budgets as well as approving budgets and dealing with income expenditures for a church worldwide. To answer the next question, what skills or qualifications do you possess? I've dealt with serving on the bylaws committee of this same civic league of Lindwood Cottage Heights, Barrow Park. With being a part of that, you dealt with many things that people did not agree with in the civic league when you brought different things to amend to the bylaws. With that, we were able to come together as a bylaws committee and look at the greater denominator and come back and have an agreement of what we can do to better our community. Not only that, I dealt with the budgetary issues as well. I stepped in at a time where we had to handle a situation, and I probably was able to come in and remedy that. Not only that, also, I feel as if I'm qualified.
Two minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Smith. Tiffany Buffalo School Board Member. I have the second question. Please describe a time you had to make a difficult ethical decision and how you navigated it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Buffalo. I was able to take on a situation with dealing with a problematic member of our civic league. We stepped back in the situation. And like an elephant, you have to make sure that the ground can hold you, that you move forward on. I was able to discuss with them privately and to let them know in regards of how we can handle the situation. So that way, when we came back publicly, we came showing them in the group setting that there was a resolution handled. We publicly talked about what was handled in private, so that way, there was no, how can I say? There was no smokescreen, but that people can see that there's transparency with dealing with the situation. That was one way of handling it. And with that, that helped for the greater good of us moving forward and seeing a resolution to the situation. Not only that, coming in as president of a civic league during a pandemic, dealing with an older generation, they were not used to telecommunications with Zoom. Luckily, with Norfolk Public School Systems going virtual for learning, students were able to help their parents and their grandparents at that time to logging onto Zoom. Thank y'all very much. And we were able to collaborate with letting them know about social media as well, as we implemented Instagram and Facebook, to now 60 and above are able to get on there and share and share story and reel. And even on TikTok, we're developing.
Good evening. I'm Colonel Paulson. I have the next question. How will you engage the community and strengthen the transparency around the NPS decision-making process?
Thank you. Well, within that, when I became president, I did not just stop in my community. I served going throughout the entirety of the community abroad, going to different civic leagues. I've learned so much from so many leaders as well as dealing with stakeholders in our community. What I bring to the table is this, is that I've been within this ward throughout years of serving, dealing with many advocates and many people, dealing with different programs and initiatives. That's what I feel as if can allow me and strengthen me to show the people with transparency that I'm not just getting here, but I've been here serving this community and allowing them to see me as a voice for them.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Colonel. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Smith. My name's Tanya Bassin. I have the next question. The Norfolk School Board has adopted goals focused on student outcomes. How can a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are implemented?
Great question. So, again, dealing with the civic league, you deal with a strategic plan. One thing with dealing with a strategic plan, you're able to check off and see the things that you're going by, your short-term goals as well as your long-term goals, your non-negotiables. When you see that being implemented, you're able to see that these goals are being hit. With Norfolk Public Schools, we can excel on that by making sure literacy, mathematics, it's the biggest thing that we tackle with this. That is one thing to seeing the goal. Seeing accreditation is another goal to being seen, being tackled. Excuse me. Let me slow down a little bit. But one thing I do see with us handling and getting to a goal is a strategic plan. Simple question to be answered, yes.
Hi, Mr. Smith. What do you believe are the greatest challenges currently facing the school division? What do you see as the board's role in addressing these challenges? What do you see as administration's role in addressing these challenges?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So with dealing with this, what do you believe are the greatest challenges currently facing the school division? Is making sure that our diverse community of students is reaching their goals. As stated in the last question, what can we do to reach these goals? What are we able to get done? One thing with dealing with the school system and being a stakeholder of the school system, we have to make sure that we are all looking at the strategic plan. We have to make sure that we all are in agreement when we make a decision for the greater good of our youth. Not only for the greater good of our youth, but to the staff and teachers that teach them. Growing up, it wasn't just the job to them, but it was the well-being of seeing that the students are taken care of. That is one way we can make sure that the schools are being taken care of, is making sure that the staff and teachers are having better pay as well as making sure that their resources are able to be given as well. And what do you see as administration's role in addressing these challenges? Well, with having a school board in place, a school board helps to approve the budget to making sure that these things can go forward. The school board also makes sure to creating policy to make sure that these things are done.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith? My name's Adele Martin. I'll be asking the next question. How do you plan to address disparities in student achievement and ensure that all students, regardless of background, have access to high-quality education and resources?
Well, one thing of being a stakeholder, making sure that we are within the communities of our schools, looking at them. There's many resources out there that we're able to get to. Not only that we have that, but, for example, partnering with two of our local schools, we've had the principals to come in, staff members to come in, and voice what did they need from the community. And in return, we saw grateful, we saw great things happen, and we were very grateful of that occurring. A thing for us to also achieve is to make sure that we have different committees in place to make sure that we stay in contact with the schools, to make sure that we also visit them in hearing the voices of our students as well as our teachers and staff members. That's how we can have a high-quality education. And as for resources, going into the communities and seeing that they have in place.
Thank you. Do you have any additional items that you would like to share with the board?
Well, additional items that I have, again, I'm a lifetime resident of Lindwood. And with that being said, I feel like I can serve with you all in knowing that we can collaborate with one another to making sure that the future can go on. I myself was a product of the school system. Now it's my time to serve. I feel as if that serving has been something I've been doing for years. And to continue on to serve on the school board will see that someone else can come behind me and continue on the legacy of the cornerstone that was laid for Norfolk Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a point of order question for the board.
Okay.
As we're 45 minutes early and the last interview was not scheduled till 7:30, are we comfortable with moving forward to the public hearing at this point? Or do we want to delay until 8 o'clock?
No. Go ahead. I would say go ahead. We don't want to.
They move forward.
Yeah, keep going.
All right. So we'll move forward. Thank you.
You want to say something, Tiffany?
I was just going to say.
Yes, say it as soon as you can.
I was just going to say, if we're going to do that, you just, does she have to close this portion and then open the public hearing? No?
Well, you have it on the agenda as current.
Current, okay. Okay.
All right. So we will move on to Agenda Item 5.01, public hearing on the ward, three school board candidates.
And Madam Chair, we have one speaker for tonight, and it's Dr. John Sica. You know what? I just thought about something. We need to shift so you can have the podium.
Yes.
Sit there.
It's right here. There we go. Okay, we're ready. Dr. Sika.
Good evening, Mr. Sika.
Good evening, Chairlady, School Board. I'm going to try and make this quick because I only have three minutes. So I'm Dr. John Sika III. I live off Souls Point Road. My children went to Norview Elementary, Middle School, and High School. Now I have a granddaughter in Granby and a grandson in Northside. Now, that being said, I'm here because I'm concerned about what just happened just in this room. Did we really serve the stakeholders? Our stakeholders are the voters. Each of y'all got elected. You weren't appointed. You were elected. That means you had to answer to voters, and all these questions y'all asked, that was very impressed. I could answer every one of them, too, because I asked somebody, well, was it because I didn't have the background or the experience? Oh, I guarantee you, I have a lot of experience and background in answering any of these because I had to answer to voters. And I was really upset because Mark Askew, when we look at the voters in the third ward in 2022, Carlos got at least 4,900. Mars Askew got already 41. I got only 800. But regardless, had I not been on that ballot, you'd be having Mark up here. Mark was the one who actually would have won, but he wasn't in the mix for interview, was he? He should have had it just by default alone. And if he didn't want it, the next person should have been myself because we faced the voters. By doing so, you made it kind of a good old boys' club because they get to pick who's going to be it, not the voters. Now whoever you select has, if they want to continue, have to face the voters. And if the person challenges them, anybody, let's say Mark challenges them, he can go back and say, well, they were selected. They weren't voted in. Now, there's six people here. Mark got over 4,000. I got over 800. And as for votes, let me tell you how hard it is to run for office. You had a lot of sharp people up here. I would love to see how they would do in an election, seriously. I only ran for school board in 2022. I ran for House of Delegates in the 93rd in 2023, and I also ran for U.S. Congress in 2024. And y'all may not realize it, but how many of you can get 90,000 votes over five cities for $1,400? Because that's what VPAP showed me a spinning, to get 90,000 votes. I guarantee you, school board doesn't need that many votes. But how can we work? All I can say is what happened here today, that's fantastic, but keep in mind, you left out two critical people you should have interviewed, the ones the voters selected, not appointed. And that would be my big point tonight, and I know Mark would be saying the same thing if he was here. He's in surgery. But regardless, I know his passion, I know his belief, and I know where he stands on all these issues you just had. He knew it in detail. He could bring it down. And I can tell you from my background and experience, I didn't get Doctor of Education just by being cute. Mine was actual dissertation, real research. And I actually helped build a school from going, broken-down school from 50,000 to 7 million in 10 years. Then went down to Texas to a minority college and helped build their program. And I could tell you about every answer y'all had, I could have answered every one of those very easily in two minutes. And thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
And that concludes our speakers for tonight.
All right. Need a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There needs to be a roll call.
There needs to be a roll call. I'm sorry.
And was that Thomas that seconded?
Yes.
I couldn't hear. It was Martin that seconded. Okay, thank you. Move that the members of the School Board of the City of Norfolk go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A1 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is a discussion of candidates for temporary appointment to the board seat representing Ward Three pending the November 25th special election. Counsel, consultation with legal counsel, and briefing by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2-3711A7 and 8 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the closed session is for legal advice in connection with the matters set above in subsection A of this motion. Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
All right. Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that we come out of closed session.
Second.
All right. It has been moved by Dr. Martin and seconded by Colonel Paulson that we come out of closed session.
Okay. A resolution certifying the second meeting of the School Board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the School Board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board of the City of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, will therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board of the City of Norfolk. Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
I move that we.
All right. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Aye. I move to appoint Jason Inge, Inge, to serve as the School Board Representative for Ward Three until the position is filled by a special election.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore Buffalo has moved that the position be filled by Mr. Jason Inge. We'll have to have a lesson, until the fee seat is filled by special election.
Please call the roll.
Please call the roll.
Who's second?
I second.
We do second.
It was Buffalo and Martin seconded.
I said, oh.
Buffalo made the motion and Martin seconded. Okay. So Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
That's it.
All right. Do we have a motion to close? Well, then I'm closing this meeting.